So I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:01. Welcome, public. Is there any public comment? We have a young man here, hello.
Hi.
Hi.
These are new reps.
Oh, yeah.
Would this be an appropriate time to introduce your new board?
Yes, awesome.
I'm very pleased to introduce Mason Charleboy. Charleboys or Charleboys?
Charleboy.
Charleboy. And Mason is in the 10th grade. He's president of his class right now. He will be our 11th grade rep. And came very well recommended from his teachers. And has a keen interest in politics.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Awesome.
He's included in my board report, but help me, it's the Iraqi Youth Exchange.
Yeah, that sounded really interesting.
Are you?
July 11th to August 4th.
So can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah. I had to apply for the, it's short for ILIP, but pretty much 10 teenagers around the nation are chosen to participate in this program. And what the program entails is we talk about current issues and cultural differences and boundaries and how we can help kind of connect with each other beyond those boundaries. I was chosen as one of the 10 in the United States.
Nice. That is really awesome.
It takes place?
It takes place in Brattleboro, Vermont. And then we go to three cities, Chicago, Illinois, either three cities, sorry. Chicago, Illinois, Louisville, Kentucky, or Portland, Oregon. And then we finish by going to Washington DC and meeting with the State Department.
Wow, that's good.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. So Mason will join in May formally as we transition the seniors out.
And we don't have any kids tonight, looks like.
Well, I thought we'd have at least one. I knew that Josh was not available. And I thought that we'd see Emily and Eva, but they may be running late.
Were they on the Germany trip? No, because maybe they're retired.
Did they just come back today?
Last night.
Last night, wow. Wow.
I know Emily wasn't.
So Martha and Nancy, do you have any comments?
It's a beautiful day.
It's a beautiful day.
Especially after yesterday.
Yes.
I'm crazy.
It's melting.
Alright, so.
I love the shades that allow us to be in the room.
It is, it's pretty awesome. This is really comfortable, Stephanie, thank you. It's really nice. Student reports, we don't have any, looks like. Superintendent, is there any questions? We don't have a superintendent. We can put that off till, unless somebody has some questions. Any of you guys have questions? Did you ask about the, wanted to ask about the audit?
About the audit?
Numbers?
Oh, we.
Well, that's at the Northwest, that's at the supervisory meeting.
Yeah, it is, actually.
Okay, so we can do that at that board meeting. Any other questions for the superintendent who isn't here? We can move on to the principals' report. And any questions on that? Chris, Christina, George?
I'd like to congratulate Jay.
Yes, welcome officially. Thank you, George.
Happened several weeks ago.
Yeah, I know.
You forgot about it.
It's just part of the job.
Right, right. Moving on, right?
Thank you.
Actually, I do, I noticed in your report you included the proposed cuts or whatever.
Yeah, and I think that was the response to your question a couple of months ago.
Well, thank you. Yeah. But I also noticed that originally, wasn't there a math teacher that was going to be cut too? And that's not happening now? Or that was just?
No, we're reducing by one FTE a math position. Because it's not, we don't have the enrollment to support those classes. And, but that position, the funding for that position was stayed in the budget, the proposed budget. And it's, but.
So it's not like you're losing a teacher, but you're not losing a teacher?
Well, you see, I'm increasing in some other areas. So I have to do some increasing to support enrollment in other areas, so.
Okay.
And I think with our fluctuating class sizes, you know, one class has 65, one class has 85, that's going to be the reality of what we do, so.
Great.
But, yeah, it worked out, it worked out well.
Thank you for doing that.
So the bottom line is, did we lose a teacher?
It was a one-year-only position.
Oh, okay.
So.
Yep, not a problem.
So, yeah, we are reducing the math department by one FTE. It was really math, four sections, and middle school, two sections. And again, it's a response to not enough students enrolled in classes because of our population, so, yeah.
And there is a half-time English position cut, too, right? Is that?
Yeah, that was on this list.
Right.
Although, interestingly, we're, she's staying on in another role. She's going to be filling in for Michael Thomas while he's on his role in sabbatical. And I had, actually, with final enrollments, I needed to add one section of English. So she's picking that up, so she's .8 or .9 next year.
Yep.
And I would hope not to lose her. She's been a really nice addition after some rocky hires, so.
And that was a rough start.
Yeah. So we bumped up art slightly to accommodate the enrollment. I'm gonna, I'm looking for a half-time PE health teacher or a driver's ed teacher, depending. So it's, I mean, that's just going to be the reality of what we do.
Yeah.
Wonder how long that is sustainable for?
I don't know, I don't know a high school that doesn't do this.
Really?
Yeah, because you can't, you can't have a teacher without enrolled classes, you know? But we're all looking at a way of changing what we're doing anyway. So, you know, it remains to be seen what scheduling will look like in like three or four years when we move to proficiency-based learning. But I think it, you know, we're well-staffed and in a good place.
Okay. And do you think we're offering enough broad-based classes for our students to be interested in staying here?
We haven't reduced any programming.
No? Not, no, not chorus, not?
The reductions were made in response to the enrollment, but we're still offering classes in all those areas.
There just might be less opportunity in a given year to get what you want because of scheduling.
Right, yeah. I mean, where we might have had two sections of a class, we only have one section of a class because we only have 15 students enrolled in it as opposed to 30, you know, so, but.
I guess I'm stuck, the world drumming, I know, was cut a while ago.
It wasn't. It was reduced due to enrollment. We didn't have any students enrolled in it. And, or two students, maybe. So we offered it again this year.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask.
We don't have enough, and we'll continue to offer it. And actually, offering those classes every other year will build the capacity to actually have enough students in it to have a viable class, so.
I have one other question about whether any students have applied to come here through school choice? And how many students, do you know?
We should have two students on the waitlist for, to come to VUHS.
Okay.
And we had five coming in, five going out. And, you know, the going out is dependent on them getting accepted to their choice schools too, and they didn't get accepted to their choice schools.
Okay.
So they might be waitlisted or something there. So we actually, we have five students coming here and two waitlisted if those other, if some of the five end up not accepting their position.
Okay. How many students did we have apply to go out? Do you know?
About the same, seven, I think.
Oh, it's only seven?
Seven or eight, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. I think there were three that were not selected through the lottery.
Okay.
So I had three questions, actually, that I asked earlier. We had $54,000 in the budget for Chromebooks. And I'm wondering how the implementation of that is going.
It's been great.
Has it?
Yeah, middle school's one-to-one. And actually, I think we're, that's, we plan to do a separate report on that. We're still gathering data. We're doing some surveys because the 7th grade just finished doing their S-Backs on the Chromebooks.
Oh.
Part of the 11th grade did, part of the testing on Chromebooks. And the 8th grade will also test on Chromebooks. The 7th grade and 8th grade have implemented them extensively throughout their classes. So I think I'd prefer to.
Absolutely.
To do a formal report on that, but we're also purchasing more, more Chromebooks.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Tom, thanks for coming.
The kids had to make some presentations, and I came over for that. And the 8th graders were using the Chromebooks for their presentation.
That was the capstones?
Yes, the capstones.
Yeah, those are capstones, amazing. Do you think in that presentation, we could get one of the teachers to come in and say how they're doing with it?
Sure, I'm sure we could.
I'd love to have their feedback.
Yeah.
That'd be great. And then the other ACT 77 implementation for FY '16, we are supposed to have the 8th grade, 7th grade? I'm not even sure what, where we're at as far as implementing ACT 77.
Proficiency-based learning in a personalized environment.
Thank you. Sounds like you've been talking about it, Stephanie.
Well, we're moving that, I mean, the class of 2020 is supposed to graduate through a proficiency-based system. We've already implemented that. Our 2016 is the first class that's graduating with responsibility for some of the PBGRs. That's proficiency-based. So each class, we're adding more of those. Full implementation, full implementation of the PBGRs will be with 2020. And, you know, we're doing, looking at standards-based grading and changes in how we deliver instruction to accommodate that. So there are going to be some pretty exciting shifts in the, in the next few years. And we're also looking at, you know, our, let's know it's flexible pathways and alternate pathways, and how we can open that up to more students. Sometimes there's a real equity issue with, for instance, kids who can drive, kids who can't drive. Kids who can get themselves up to Burlington to take early college at CCV and kids who can't, that sort of thing.
So flexible pathways is a formal program, or it's a?
It's sort of, it's what's embedded in the legislation, which basically allows students to earn credit outside of a classroom experience. So, you know, a content area credit, under the supervision of a content area specialist or properly endorsed teacher, but through independent learning or alternate experiences, like dual enrollment. So taking a class at CCV that counts both for college credit and, we would accept it as credit here, or early college, where they finish, they can take their last year completely at CCV or Vermont Tech or UVM, but it counts for any credits they may need to satisfy our graduation requirements, plus get a year of college or partial year of college under their belt.
What's the, what are the costs of managing that administratively for, like, to, in terms of accrediting? Or is it just a fairly straightforward accrediting?
Right, well, it's, we thought we were, yeah, that part is fairly straightforward. We have a dual enrollment coordinator, which is just one of our school counselors, and there's a voucher system. But that's being supported through a grant from the state so far. There was talk a year and a half ago about schools assuming the cost of the credit at CCV.
Yeah, that's right.
At a reduced rate. And, you know, I was looking at budgeting about $14,000 extra dollars to do that, but they backed off, and it's being supported by the grant. So, continued. So I think at some point.
Estate grant, sorry.
Pardon?
Estate grant?
Yes, yeah. I think, you know, we'll, we'll look at assuming some costs for that at some point. But, you know, in the meantime, our costs are reduced because we have adjunct professors here, our own teachers who qualify as CCV instructors to offer courses. So we have three, as, well, many more than that, depending on enrollment, but we have three courses this year that have counted as dual enrollment. And I gave numbers a couple of reports ago, I don't remember. Maybe 40 or 50 students are involved in dual enrollment classes this year.
Well, some more students through the Career Center as well.
Yeah.
Because the Career Center has several dual enrollment.
Yeah. And Walden, the Walden program has classes that have been accepted as count, you know, they submit their credentials and get credentials. Nancy is one of our instructors. Michael Thomas and Lynn Kayhart, along with Matt Shine.
And Michael will be gone for a year?
Semester, and then come back with a one-class reduced teaching load the second semester.
For what it's worth, I met with one of the senior morning meeting classes, and I asked them how the PBGRs were going, and the response was very interesting. They said they felt like they knew more than the teachers do. Which, which, you know, I mean, this is a new thing, and so on and so forth, but it made me think, you know, what are we doing as a school to support the teachers in this yet again asking them to do something completely different?
You know, I would say we want to constantly improve, right? And inherent in improvement is change, so there's going to be change. I don't think it's a bad thing. I think the way, you know, what, the world we're preparing our students for, it looks very different from the world that we were prepared for.
I'm not arguing about the preparation. I want to make sure our teachers are prepared, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and we're working on that. We're working on that. Yeah, we have 16 students, 16 teachers taking the standards-based grading course right now. I mean, that's a, that's a huge opportunity. We're going to be offering a master's program here in the district. And, yeah, there, I mean, there's, we're all changing. I was, I'm pleased to hear that about the students, because some of the students have felt that, you know, they're not, but that the shift is really putting the onus on the student to be more involved in their own education. It's not sit, it's not, you know, sit and receive, it's go and get now. And that's personalized learning. It's students being asked to own their own education, where they are in relation to these standards, and what do they need to do to get there, to improve their own skills, so. So good, that's good on the students.
Yeah, I was, they were great.
I'm wondering what they meant by that. What do they know more about the, I mean, I'm encouraged too, because there's more complaints at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Now they see, there was more complaints at the beginning of the year, "You're making us do this, it's our last year, why are you throwing this on us?"
It's not fair.
Yeah.
Suck it up.
So in a way, that's encouraging.
Yeah.
I mean, is it functioning more like a mentorship kind of thing? Or like, are they just like, what are they being told to do?
Well, the morning meeting advisors are, it's morning meeting groups that are, it's in those cohorts that they are developing these presentations, the senior presentations.
So it's a senior presentation?
Well, for the seniors, it is. Every grade is doing some sort of presentation. We're building capacity, but this is the first year. So by the time the freshmen are there, they will understand that being asked to show evidence of their learning is just an expectation. But, you know, having, helping students meet proficiency in these particular areas, these transferable skills, that means the instruction will have to happen in the classroom. So how do I develop critical thinking skills in my students through classroom experiences and outside of classroom experiences in order to make sure that they are proficient in this area? Or critical thinking, or reading, writing, speaking, and listening, or problem solving, and, you know, global citizenship, all those things that we've identified as necessary skills for 21st century learners.
I'm aware of our time issues. The last question was AYP. I've heard it mentioned a couple of different times, and I know we are not in compliance with the annual yearly progress. And I don't necessarily want you to speak to that right now, unless you have something quick to say, but at some point, that would be something I'd be interested in hearing about.
We don't have any scores. I mean, we're still grandfathered into the last kneecap scores, which were administered in the fall of 2013. So none of the, the new S-Back scores have counted yet. This will be the first round of assessments that actually will, and we don't even know because the scores haven't come in for the Vermont cohort yet. So we're, our AYP status has not changed from our AYP status in 2013.
But you expect it to?
I don't know.
You don't know?
S-Back is a new assessment.
Those results come out in the summer, right?
We're supposed to get them fairly soon.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, this year, last year, they held them statewide. This year, we are supposed to get them earlier.
Okay.
But we don't know what that looks like yet.
They're not done, though.
No, the 8th grade has an assessment, we still have makeups to do. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Steph? Business manager, who is not here.
She's probably with the superintendent, isn't she?
I think they're bouncing, yeah, they're maybe there. They're going to be here by 6:30.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Facilities committee. George.
Not me.
No? I don't.
We meet first Friday in May.
How did the first Friday in April go?
I was not. Oh, yeah, that's right, Tom was on there.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Tom.
I was not, so.
Were you the only one there?
Jeff Glassberg was there. And Bob?
Bob Worley.
Bob Worley. And.
Mark Powers.
Mark Powers was there. And Bob took us, I mean, do you want to report of the meeting? I can summarize the meeting.
Yeah, if you could, wouldn't mind doing it quickly, if you could.
He basically talked about, we talked about what kind of budgets we have. We, he, what kind of savings there will be, probably, we hope, as a result of the mild winter. And we talked about kind of short and long-term projects. He just provided us with a long list of things. There was no clear sense about what, we were just, it was a general conversation. It wasn't, it wasn't a specific, this is what we're going to do, you know, when we, when we know it, though he clearly knows, and he and Stephanie have talked about it. There was one other thing that we talked about, the bigger projects as well. And I don't want to speak to that because I don't know enough about them. But, but we didn't, again, it was conversation, is, a lot of it was bringing me up to speed.
The RFP.
The RFP.
Right, that's what I was going to ask. That's what you mean by the bigger project?
The bigger project, yes.
And where is that, Steph? Are you, will we have anything this year?
I don't think we've released the RFP yet.
No, I think they were talking about late June, early July.
Who's in, is that Jeff that's heading that up still?
Tanya.
Tanya, okay.
Yes, Tanya was there too.
Late June or early July?
The following year, because all the contractors are already booked now. Okay.
Hannaford Career Center, we don't have a rep. Finance committee. I have a question for Tanya. Board members? Anybody have anything to say? Except for Tom, who doesn't really. All right? So. Hey, dude. Approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written for the March 14th. A second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Is hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the bills and director's orders. I will entertain a motion to approve the bills and director's orders in the amount of $417,352.15. Did I say that too fast, Lori?
So moved.
I have a copy here, too.
Thank you.
Second, or whatever. Yes.
Any discussion? I do want to get on the record while we're here that there was a, an interest payment on the bond that was made in March, and the due date of the payment was May 1. And the, the members of the committee were curious as to why we were paying almost two months early.
Not my area.
Not my area.
I saw you receive information.
It's Tanya's question.
Thank you for noting it in the minutes.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll get Tanya to answer that. And so, any other discussion?
Now I think it's Melvin's turn.
Well, we have a motion to.
Oh.
Vote on, don't we?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay, good.
I guess you're right.
Wait, did you get your question answered, or?
No, that isn't going to change approval.
It's not going to, yeah. They've all been cut. I did hear in a recent seminar that I went to for ACT 46, that one of the boards actually looks at their bills before they're signed.
Oh, that's a radical thought.
I thought so, too. Here comes Tanya.
They must, they must meet more often than we do.
Or maybe they have less money, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, could be.
So are there any other questions? Well, Tanya, we have a question for you, but we'll go ahead and finish this so you can get settled. Thanks for being here.
Is Joanne coming back?
Yeah, at 6:30. VUES is going to join us at 6:30.
Okay.
So is there any other discussion?
Go for it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, thank you. And now we're at the quit claim. So, Tanya, in the, in the payables, the bills and directors, there was a check for about $97,000 to the US Bank?
Yep.
And the due date said May 1st?
Yep.
But the check was cut in March? Can you, do we get a reduction for interest?
We didn't pay it. We cut the check and we sit on it until two weeks before it's due, and then we send it in. But we cut it making sure we have the money, when we have the money, but we don't send it actually until it's ready.
Awesome, that's a good answer. Okay, interesting.
But, and regardless. Regardless, if we sent it early, you would not get a reduction?
No.
Only because your interest on a bond is set.
Oh, regardless of when you pay it?
Regardless of when you pay it. It's just, it's split into two times a year. And that's, that's all.
Okay.
See, you're just using a fancy way of encumbering the funds when you've got them.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Worked for me.
Thank you.
One other thing. I do have audits.
Yes.
I only have two left for the high school.
Okay.
That are bound.
Right.
But you can print off your own copy off the website if you need to have one.
Okay.
So I do have those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Tanya's business monthly expenditure report, are there, does anyone have any questions? Excuse me. I do. I knew you would.
What a surprise.
I know, really?
I know, it's always surprising.
I would be surprised if you didn't, Lori. What can I help you with?
So the March 7th says that we're, the cumulative fund balance is 138. And now we're, I mean, this is good news, but I just, I don't like the swing. That's a, you know, a 50, $83,000 swing.
Yeah.
From last, I mean, which is, I guess this $83,000 isn't that much, but it seems like.
And did you read the explanations on the back?
I did. Paying out the encumbrances should not change the cumulative fund balance.
Well, it does.
How?
Well, I mean, not paying out, but unencumbering funds does, because you have that leftover money now. Number four, I unencumbered all of that money.
Ah.
Because, because.
We don't need it.
We shouldn't be spending it in those areas. I mean, Stephanie may have a use for it in other areas, but, you know, I talked to Bob Worley, and regarding the fuel, you know, he, at this point right now, he's going to top off the tank, and he said it's maybe going to take $6,000 to top off the tank.
Though we are running the furnaces this week, it got cold again.
So it might be a little bit more, but it's not going to be $100,000.
Right.
So that, that is where the adjustment in the fund balances, because if I unencumber funds, not expecting to spend them.
I didn't get far enough in your explanation, I apologize.
Good.
Thank you.
That's roughly $139,000.
So that means we spent.
Covers what you're talking about. Yeah.
Shoot, there was something I was thinking about. All right.
So, just so I, I just want to elaborate a little bit on this.
Thank you.
With it, look, you know, there's only two, a month and a half left of school. I think Stephanie is doing a very good job. I, I think Stephanie is doing a very good job in her spending, and if it stays consistent like this, um, I would like to, you know, we are looking at, after the FY seventeen year, having no deficit whatsoever for the high school.
That was gonna be my next question.
Okay, because right now, i- if we get through sixteen, and we only have a deficit of fifty-four, a cumulative deficit of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
In the seventeen budget, we've already got that two hundred and eighty-seven in there that we're collecting on. So, we will have, we potentially will have a surplus at the end of seventeen.
Going into the unified.
If everything happens.
Is, would there be any, would there be any benefit to the high school, um, investing some of that in the high school somehow? So that it doesn't transfer into the unified board?
Well, uh, you know, that surplus, you could get rid of your, um, food service deficit. You could take that amount of money and bring it to the voters, you know, a, a certain amount of money that you have left over, bring it to the voters, to ask them to put it into the capital construction fund?
Or another fund balance.
Or another fund, or, you know, whatever. I mean, you don't have to just leave it out there free will, I mean, there are options, yes, that you could use that money for.
Great. Stephanie, are there other funds you're, we'd like to see started, besides the capital fund?
How about the technology fund?
Um, no, I've just seen it done differently in different schools that I've worked in, so, different, they have different approaches. So, you know, there's lots of things I haven't, haven't been thinking about, having extra money.
Is a separate item.
Yeah.
I, oh, you guys do.
Do you have some examples of how other schools would choose to?
I could dig them up, yeah, I don't want to talk about them now, but, you know, this is my third high school that I've had experience in, so, you know, that they, they had different financial situations too.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Awesome news, thank you, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
So, now we are sort of done with the meeting. And we don't have V U E... That's V U E S is supposed to join us at six thirty for that.
They're a little late.
They are, hi Mel, thanks for being here. And I would hesitate to ask you to start without them.
No.
I don't think there's any reason to start without them.
You really don't want to hear this twice.
No, I mean, that, plus, you don't want to say it twice, so...
Well, he's already said it more than once.
Oh, really? Did he say it to you?
He said it to me. I, I bugged the hell out of him in Tuesday morning.
Did you?
Yeah.
Good, did you get satisfied with the conversation?
I... I think you answered that.
I don't want to convert coercion here.
Talking about the results, and she's talking about, we're okay with the conversation? We had a, we had a very, a very productive and informative conversation. And I have withdrawn my objection.
To the survey?
But, I, I still got some problems with how the city has done things in the past. City? Yes. I think it's how the school has done things in the past. Well, you know... See how this conversation ended, you know? It's, it's one of those things. It's nothing that, that we're ever gonna resolve, so, it's not worth arguing about, right?
There's gotta be a middle ground somewhere. This may be the shortest board meeting on record.
On record.
It might.
Of course, we're not...
Pretty dang close.
Yes, well, um...
There were a few in August that, when it was really hot in here, that went pretty quick.
Yeah.
There is a, I understand there is a extended copy of that map that's gonna be passed out.
So, the RFP for the, um, help me.
Oh.
Auditing?
For the audit, the energy...
Yep.
Oh, no, it's a, um, wait, there's a...
There's a name for it.
Something, um...
Do you want to decide just to get started?
I'll think about it.
Okay.
It'll come to me in a minute.
And I, I guess, I, I'm a little surprised that it's gonna be, and maybe, Tanya, you can speak to this.
Performance contract.
Performance...
I would, I would listen to what Tanya said, see if I can, when, when, when is that going out?
May.
Oh, good, that's better than...
See, don't listen to me.
Thank you. I, he said, late June, early July, and that seemed a lot...
Get them in July.
May, we get them, um, no.
Get the bids in July?
Get the bids in June?
No, May, we're gonna send them out, June, we're gonna have the walkthroughs.
Walkthroughs.
July, we'll get them back. August, you should make, you should choose a vendor, I think, that's the way it's gonna work. 'Cause you don't meet in June, I mean, July.
And it's for energy things, or what's the RFP for exactly?
It's for, um, hiring a performance contractor, which, there's a number of companies out there that, they come in and they guarantee energy savings if you make these changes.
Okay.
And they fund them, all of the changes. And if you don't, and they get their money by your savings. And if you don't save, then they lose money. So, they're ga- they're guaranteeing that you will save money in your en- energy expenses if you make their changes.
Most of the work is centered around, uh, in, in these performance contracts, energy efficiency, efficient lighting?
Yeah.
Other, uh, heating elements, um, other electrical use kind of thing. So, it might be insulation, it's never windows. Um, but, we're hoping, uh, it might, we use fuel oil. Um, a few years ago, many schools went through, like biofuel and wood chips and the like. So, it might, you know, the, we don't know what the proposal will look like, but we're, we're hoping that it, and we've designed it to include the heat transference. So, basically, the steam side of the building would be included in that, and the controls to, um, and that's where some savings are also, so, that, you know, the controls control how the heat is being delivered.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, you know, as opposed to someone having to actually, it's like your home, it's like an electronic thermostat kind of thing.
Yeah, but they don't typically suggest improvements that you can't afford necessarily, or, I'm like, what happens if they say?
They fund all of anything.
They fund the improvements, yeah.
They fund the improvements.
So, is, is part of that gonna be converting to natural gas?
Well, you know, it, given the day, it depends on whether it's available or not, but of course, it would be, you know, what we, we, no one, I haven't seen the Vermont gas on the street yet, so, um, I think when they, when they show up, we're, we'll know. But, that, that would've been the plan, you know?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if, if the, the wood chips are still as attractive as they were years ago. Um, I've, you know, I've been in schools that heat that way, and, uh, so, it remains to be seen. But that would be a, that would be part of the plan, I would imagine.
There have been so many conversions to the wood chip, that wood chips are now harder to get in the quantity that you want.
So, so the, um, the proposal would include our heat plant, right?
That's sort of the targeted area.
Right, because the steam, right, the steam is very old.
So, doesn't it make sense to have a short meeting?
Today?
And, and approve that? When you've got the, when the bids are in, why wait an extra month? Because there's no meeting, why not?
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Have a special meeting just for that purpose, so that we can get underway with this?
Well, let, let me get a better timeline.
Okay.
And then, yeah, but we, it, we're discussing that at the next facilities meeting anyway, so...
Okay.
Friday.
Oh, and I did find, remember the other question about the electricity?
Friday next.
Right. Do we really have eight thousand dollars' worth of savings in electricity, or did we overbudget? I just, I mean, I know we're spending like eighty-three...
Well, and it would be tied to the use of the, of the furnace and the, and the heating system. So, we use, you know...
That totally makes sense.
Right.
'Cause there's, there's pumps involved, and they eat a lot of electricity.
Right.
And I, I even, you know, and I even, for the last two months, I estimated high. So, that would, you know, you may have more of a savings than the eight thousand, or less of a savings, so, it's right around there.
Alright. Again, thanks.
Welcome.
Really. Uh, okay.
Joanne's here.
Joanne's here, do, does anybody have questions about Joanne's report? Alright, okay. Um, V U E S?
They're here.
So, we're taking the...
The representative is here.
Did we vote on the...
Good, hi.
Auditing?
Um, we're, this is the presentation for the quit claim deed?
Right.
Okay.
The, as you were, got it, got it, got it, got it, that's fine.
Yes, would you like to start, Mel?
I can, just to get started.
Yes, please do.
Well, just to give just a little bit of background here, information. Obviously, from the Act forty-six Study Committee, you know, there were land issues in Virgens, Ferrisburg, and Addison, and it was basically agreed that there would be some form of a memorandum of understanding, uh, entered into with those three municipalities to take care of their respective issues. In the case of Virgens, there was really three issues, and when I say issues, that's with a small i. Uh, one issue deals with the fire station deed, we'll get to that. Another issue is, uh, relative to a sewer easement, to avoid, if, if, if the eight a- if the eight acres is ever to be developed, to be, that needed sewer, to be able to avoid, uh, having to put in a pump station to serve that property with sewer. And then a third matter dealt with the fact that the city owns the swimming pool, the tennis court, the skate park, the skating rink, which is adjacent to the Virgens Union Elementary School, and I, and there certainly is a history of either other memorandums, understandings, or terms and conditions, and whatever. And so, Joanne, um, at the direction of somebody, got in touch with Giuliani's office, and who attempted to draw, to draft this initial MOU, which was like to draft an agreement, to do a future agreement. And Joanne and I, I know that Jason Pieron was there, and I, I feel like there was another person besides us, and I can't remember who it was, so, if they're here, I'm sorry.
Cheryl, maybe Cheryl?
Might have been Cheryl. So, anyway, one of the things that Joanne and I quickly came to the conclusion was, is that instead of spending a lot of time drafting an agreement to develop some future agreement, why don't we just do the work? And so, I agreed to have the city attorney, uh, take a look at the quit claim deed to address the fire station that was done back in two thousand and fourteen, and it just ended up being shelved. Fortunately, Joanne's filing system is far better than mine, she still had it, it's still just fine, uh, other than some change of, of chairs. Relative to the, the sewer easement, you know, we don't need Paul Giuliani writing city sewer easements, I have a city attorney that writes them on a routine basis. So, I agreed to just make sure that those documents were completed. Relative to the other memorandum of understanding, that's gonna take some work, it's, it's complicated. Uh, shared parking, when can the, can, can, when the general public use these recreation facilities? We got some work to do in that regard. Been an issue for a long time, you know, you know, we're gonna continue operating the pool and the tennis courts, you guys are gonna continue to operate the school there, we do need to figure those things out, but it, it was very clear to us that, let's try to take care of the low hanging fruit and get those out of the way, uh, hopefully, and knowing that we're leaving the toughest issue on our, on our plate, so, I, I'm guilty of doing that, so, so, anyway. So, tonight, what we're trying to do is to, is to, uh, hopefully, start to put to bed two of those issues. So, I don't care which one you want to talk about first, if you're agenda says quit claim deed, let's talk about that one first, if that's okay? So, in nineteen fifty-nine-ish, uh, when the Virgens High School, uh, which, where George went to high school, uh, when they closed down and, and moved kids over to this facility here, uh, the, what is now the fire station used to be the gymnasium. And so, obviously, when that school closed down, uh, that building, i.e. gymnasium, I mean, we had a, an elementary school, and you have a new high school with a brand-new gym, and of course, at that time, if you can imagine this, the fire station consisted of the garage that's behind my office at City Hall, alright? It's about as big as this room that, between those two rows of books right there, that was the Virgens Fire Station, alright? So, obviously, Ralph Dr- Jagman and Company were looking for a new home, gym, you know, this gymnasium, uh, and, and the way that Ralph does thing is, if you're unsure about whether or not the floor can hold the fire trucks, the easiest way, the easiest way to find out is just pull them in, alright? And if they, if it, if they know it's okay, and then start to put some water in the tanker, and if it still holds, you're good to go. So, so what happened in nineteen fifty-nine is, there was a, uh, at the annual meeting of the, excuse me, nineteen fifty-seven, uh, at the annual meeting of the Virgens Graded School District, there was an article that said, to see if the voters will authorize the transfer to the city of Virgens of the present high school gymnasium, together with a parcel of land on which it is situated, this parcel having a frontage of two hundred feet more or less on Short Street, and frontage of eighty feet more or less on Green Street, said building to be used as a fire station and for other municipal purposes, comma, said transfer to take place only after the building and land are no longer needed for school purposes, and to elect an agent to convey saying. I've never, I, I know that this passed, or some form of this passed, because in nineteen fifty-nine, the Virgens Graded School District deeded the fire station property over to the city of Virgens. The dots that, not that I've spent a lot of time trying to connect these dots, but one, one thing that we can't seem to connect is nowhere in what I just read to you, was there anything about if the city was to ever sell this facility, then the proceeds are to be transferred back to the Virgens Graded School District, it's not written here. I'm not gonna say that there wasn't some discussion in nineteen fifty-seven, I was four years old, so, I don't know. If somebody's real curious about what that discussion was in nineteen fifty-seven, go see Joanne, let her go through her, her file boxes. I don't have them, I'm not the keeper of Virgens Graded School District minutes, so if you're curious, go ahead. So, so obviously, that, that, it's not a reversion of property, it's, it's, it's not. Basically, what, what the deed did, in essence, was to keep the fire station on the balance sheet of the Virgens Graded School District, okay? 'Cause if, if the city has to, upon sale, transfer the assets in the form of money back to the Virgens Graded School District, that asset is zero to me, alright? But, a- anyway, we, we've owned it, operated, sunk two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into it in nineteen seventy-eight, I gotta believe that nobody took a look at that deed, uh, what are we doing this for, anyway? So then, uh, in two thousand and ten, the Virgens Graded School District dissolves. And I've always called that, uh, proceeds clause stranded assets. I can assure you that when the Virgens Graded School District dissolved in two thousand and ten, that was overlooked. I'm really quite confident of that. I happened to uncover it when David Schlansky was asking me, asking me what the dimensions were of, of the Bureau Superintendent's Office. That's where I thought, what the heck, what's that in there? So, this is where this all got started, and, uh, obviously, the, the taxpayers of Virgens, the people of Virgens built that gymnasium, and the taxpayers of Virgens, uh, authorized the conveyance of that to the city of Virgens for use as a fire station. That, with this proceeds having to go back to the Virgens Graded School District, which no longer exists, and the Virgens Union Elementary School soon to no longer exist, and for the Virgens Union High School to soon no longer exist. I'd like to just get this cleaned up, and so, our city attorney drafted a quit claim deed, which was signed off by Linda Hawley and Nancy Larrel, who are the remaining living people from the Virgens Graded School District Prudential Committee, and it awaits signatures of authorized people from the Virgens Union Elementary School and the Virgens Union High School. And then we would record that quit claim deed in the records, and no one will ever have to tell, hear this story again.
But you tell it so well now.
I know, yeah, very, I've told it a few times. So, what I'm, what I'm requesting this evening of the Virgens Union High School is to authorize Joanne or somebody to sign this quit claim deed on behalf of the Virgens Union High School board.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm, maybe I'm dense, but I thought the vote in fifty-seven? Maybe I'm dense, but I thought the vote in '57 resulted in a quitclaim deed originally. So, I'm confused as to why we're not...
It's just an article in a warning.
So, the deed never got signed?
The deed was signed, oh, yeah. We have the deed.
I'm confused.
Sure. In 1957, I read the article that was in front of there.
Right, which was to transfer the property to the city.
Sure. On June 26, 1959, as authorized by that action that was approved in 1957, Ben Gould, who was the agent for the Virgens Graded School District, signed this deed, which is now recorded in our land records, of the fire station property. It describes the property. However, there's this clause in here that says the condition of this deed is such that if the landed premises should be sold or otherwise disposed of by the said city of Virgens, the proceeds of said sale shall be...
Thank you, Mel. That was the piece I missed. Thank you.
I see that as a cloud on our title.
Yep.
Okay? And so, the quitclaim deed, once signed by whoever else, of which the city attorney feels, the high school board, I'm not so sure that you folks have any interest in this, anyway, because the high school really didn't get created, had nothing to do with this whatsoever. But, our city attorney, who feels that a quitclaim deed, you can have the whole world sign it. All they're doing is signing off their rights, whatever those may be, all right? So, I don't know whether or not you have any rights or not, all right? But, all I'm trying to do is get this title cleared. And the city attorney claims that by having an authorized agent from both the VUES and VHS, along with the two folks that have already signed on behalf of the dissolved Graded School District, would put that to bed.
Okay.
I would move that we authorize Joanne to sign this.
All right, second.
Any discussion? All those in paper?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Sewer easement. The other is when the Virgens Graded School District dissolved, as part of that dissolution was to, in essence, rid itself of all of its real estate. And, obviously, in 1989, the Virgens Graded School District transferred some 14 acres to the Virgens Union Elementary School, and reserved all of the other land surrounding it, which is indicated on the map that got distributed. So, that was, so in 1989, you know, the Virgens Graded School District, or prior to 1989, Virgens Graded School District owned a very large tract of land. And as a matter of fact, and included in that what they owned, if you look at, what did they own in 1989? They owned everything that's in that tract. And just kind of by the way, in 1978, they bought this eight-acre parcel just off New Haven Road, which is, was encompassed in their entire real estate ownership. So, in 1989, Graded School District sold, offered, transferred 14-plus acres to the Virgens Union Elementary School, retaining all of the rest of the property. So, once the Graded School District, or part of the dissolution of the Virgens Graded School District involved the transfer of all of its real estate holdings. And the way that, that, without knowing about the fire station, the way that that transfer occurred was, you'll notice, a 3.09-acre parcel, which encompasses the swimming pool, tennis court, skate park, and skating rink. That was transferred to the city of Virgens in April of 2010. Also, in 2010, the 8.34-acre, you'll notice on that map that there's a line drawn through the name Dickerson, and it says city of Virgens. That, that's the parcel that the Graded School District acquired in 1978. That parcel was transferred to the city of Virgens. The parcel in between, there's like an 11.997-acre parcel that got, which of about 75% of it is used by the high school for their athletic fields. You can see some baseball fields on there. And so, in 2010, when I worked with Tom O'Brien, it was like, what's the easiest way to get these properties transferred? And I explained to him that the easiest way is to transfer them just the way that they got transferred, because none of them needed a subdivision permit. Because the 3.09-acre parcel was created when the subdivision permit was granted to sell the Virgens Union Elementary School, its 14.5 acre. So, that subdivision created that piece, all right? The eight-acre, the eight-acre piece was acquired separately, and therefore, if acquired separately, it can be sold separately. And then, the other 11.997, you know, arguably, the, what would be the westerly chip that kind of extends over to Haven Road, you know, maybe that should've gone to the high school, but why go through a permit process, they permit process? So, like I say, Tom and I, we're all about, let's make this simple, let's make this expensive. And so, that, that entire 11.997 acre went to the high school, knowing the portion of that 11.997 was outdoor classroom. So, we could've bogged ourselves down and created the parcel, but we didn't. We just said, listen, let's just do it this way. We would hope that the high school and the elementary will be able to get along, you know, kind of co-owning, you know, some land. No differently, that a lot of people didn't even know that a lot of the high school ballfields were on elementary school property, Graded School District property. People didn't even know it. I knew it, but nobody, nobody really cared. So, getting back to the sewer easement, as I mentioned to you, you know, I have no plans, or the city has no plans to do anything with the parcel. And when I say that, don't, do not assume that we will never develop that property. I'm just telling you, we don't have any plans, all right, to do anything. And that's just factual. If there is anything that ever was to occur on that eight-acre parcel, eight-acre parcel that requires wastewater, you know, obviously, one solution is to have a pump station and pump that to the existing sewer main on New Haven Road. The other is what I, like I told George, currently, there is only one thing left on the planet that's still free, and that's gravity. Pretty soon, they'll figure out a way to tax it, but it's currently free. So, what this envisions is the possibility that if this property was ever to be developed needing wastewater, we would have an easement over those two parcels. So, the easement, I believe, is written in both the Virgens Union High School and the Virgens Union Elementary School, because this gravity sewer line serving that site extends over both properties.
I would make the motion that we approve the easement.
Any discussion?
Second.
Mr.? Please. I know Sue had a question that came through email, which I didn't understand, because this stuff is beyond me. Did you get your question satisfied?
I did not. It hasn't been answered yet fully. And actually, at the elementary school, it was not on our action items, just the quitclaim deed was. So, we were going to finalize that answer and then act on it in two weeks at the next meeting.
We have no plans. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
So, we, the high school, are in the process of agreeing to the easement? Is that what that motion was?
Yep.
What's your concern?
Only that Sue had these questions, and they weren't answered yet.
It's also not on your agenda or your action items.
Oh, that's true. I'm not sure we can take an action if we didn't have it on the agenda. We can't do that.
It's separate.
All wrapped up in one, aren't they?
I would argue, I would argue that this land thing is all one thing. And although it may take two actions, it's legal for us to do it. And if the questions don't get answered at the elementary level, then all they have to do is not vote for it, and the easement across our land is null and void if he can't go any farther, because he isn't gonna run a sewer line out into the middle of our land and stop.
Well, the easement actually has to be signed, but it's one easement. It's not written as two separate documents. It's one easement. Both schools, you know, need to, or has no value, really. Yep.
I think the question from the elementary school is simple enough to be answered between now and their meeting.
Yep.
It has to do with liability of the elementary school, should they allow this to happen, with the decisions that are made by the city.
And the high school doesn't have any liability?
The high, the issue would be the same, but the question came from the elementary school.
And there really isn't any liability.
I did not ask a lawyer that, George, and that's, that was my response.
And will that question be asked to our law?
That question will go to our attorney, yes.
I'm having a hard time with the fact that this was not on our action items. And I understand that you, I mean, this is land, but this is not, it does not say approval of land items. It says approval of the quitclaim deed. But I will defer to the rest of the board, if you guys don't...
I actually, I agree with you, and I, because I think this is simple enough that, assuming the issues are dealt with, at the liability issues dealt with, it's easy to add another action item to the next agenda, is it not? It'll take us five minutes in, are we in June? No, are we in May?
May ninth.
May ninth. It'll take us five minutes in May to, assuming those are dealt with.
So, yeah, anyway, I have no idea what, if somebody has some question about liability, I have no idea what they're talking about. So, I'd like to know what specifically might be the concern relative to liability. But, anyway, you'll notice on your map, there's a sewer line that runs right straight through the Virgens Union Elementary School property today. There's a sewer main that serves all of the Ferrisburg, Virgens Ferrisburg Shopping Center, all of that development, this, this area here. I mean, you gotta, we have an eight-inch sewer main heading right through all of the Virgens Union Elementary School property right now, all right? So, this is basically a service line. As a matter of fact, the Virgens Elementary School ties into that line. The Virgens Swimming Pool ties into that line. High School ties into line. So, you know, I, like I say, I don't know, I don't know what the liability concern is. I don't know. Happy to answer what it is if I knew more about what that question is.
If we agree, and you have occasion to install the line, this gives you permission to go on the land, dig the trench, put in the line.
Put it back.
Cover it back up.
Yep.
Go back 20 years later because it broke and fix it.
Yep, absolutely.
Anytime the city is doing something like that, the liability for injury or damage is upon the city for what they're doing.
Absolutely.
So, I can't see as there's any way that the school district can be liable for any of this. I don't think it's an issue.
So, in the interest of time, I would recommend that you do what Tom offered, and that's to put it on next month's agenda, because it could very likely just be an easy response. But, at this point, I think because we need to move on to the next meeting.
So, I'm assuming you're withdrawing your motion? Because it wasn't a good motion in the first place? Because we didn't have it on the agenda? Can you do it, George?
I think the chair should've never allowed any discussion on this, or, you know, that's really...
Uh-oh, Mel!
There's your turn, Mel. I'll agree with that.
Thank you. That sounds like two against one.
Amending this agenda, that's what should've happened.
I...
But, no problem.
Okay. I wish, I wish that you had brought this up in the first place, so that we could've amended the agenda and included the action.
I didn't know there were two, I didn't know there were two items. I only knew about the quitclaim deed.
As long as it didn't happen. Mel, I'm sorry you gotta wait.
I'm not coming back.
I don't need to be. We know the issues. Okay, thank you. I'm sure it'll be fine. I'm sure it'll take great...
So, I'd like a motion to adjourn. Did you withdraw?
Yes, I will withdraw my...
Thank you. You got that, Lori?
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in paper. Thank you.